You are listening to Engage here on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. This week, Governor Ron DeSantis ordered Florida lawmakers into a special session to address issues he says require immediate attention. The first matter mentioned in this proclamation issued on Monday is combating illegal immigration.
We have a responsibility to be in this fight. State and local officials in Florida must help the Trump administration enforce our nation's immigration laws. And we are going to need, in order to do that effectively, we are going to need legislation to impose additional duties on local officials and provide funding for those local officials. There also needs to be measures to hold people accountable who are violating our anti-sanctuary policies. And then Florida needs to make sure that we don't have any lingering incentives for people to come into our state illegally.
The special session convened January 27th, the week after President-elect Trump is sworn into office. While expressing their support for the incoming administration, Republican leadership in the Florida Legislature called this move premature and irresponsible. We asked UCF political science professor Dr. Aubrey Jewitt to explain the implications of the special session and the pushback to it. First, though, we needed to ask him about the political news that broke just earlier today. The governor named Attorney General Ashley Moody to replace Senator Marco Rubio if he is confirmed as U.S. Secretary of State. I began our discussion by asking Jewitt how he thinks Moody's approach to the position might differ from Marco Rubio's.
I think broadly, there won't be much of a different approach in the sense that right now, the political world up in Washington, D.C. is going to be all about Donald Trump and his agenda. And it was pretty clear that Marco Rubio was going to be very supportive of that agenda. And it's equally clear to almost all political observers that Ashley Moody is going to be very supportive of that agenda. So in the big picture, no, I don't think there'll be much difference. But in the finer details, there may be some differences. For instance, Marco Rubio has been a U.S. Senator for a while. He knows how the place works. He has a lot of friends. We saw that during his confirmation hearing, that was not very volatile. And it seems as if he's going to get a lot of Democrats that vote to support him and say, yeah, he should be the next Secretary of State. It's going to take Ashley Moody a while to figure all that out, right? To figure out how the U.S. Senate works, to deal with the relationships up there, to make some new friends and allies, to maybe begin to reach across the aisle. So I think that's going to be a difference. And then I think also, one of the differences, there is no getting around that Rubio is Cuban Hispanic from Miami. And so he had particularly on some specific issues, dealing with Cuba, dealing with immigration, and some other things that maybe were a little different than Ashley Moody. I don't think there are going to be huge policy differences, but the fact is, his background, his experience, you know, how he grew up is different than hers as a Hispanic from Miami, as a Cuban Hispanic from Miami. So I mean, there you may see some differences that may not be quite as high on her priority list, some of the issues that were high on his. So, yeah.
Any indication or early signs that Moody would be running for a full term once she finishes Rubio's current term as Senator?
I have not read of her interest to do it one way or the other, nor did I see, at least initially, Governor DeSantis addressed that. However, I would not be surprised if she ran for that seat on her own. She seems to be interested in serving it, and so it wouldn't shock me that she would not want to do it just for two years, that instead, maybe she has longer-term plans for that seat. So yeah, I count me as one that thinks she probably will run. You know, in fact, I think the conventional wisdom was that if Governor DeSantis was going to appoint a placeholder, it might have been somebody like his own Chief of Staff, James Upmire, or somebody like that. You know, when you appoint a sitting Attorney General of Florida who's a political animal and who's had some political and electoral success already as the next U.S. Senator from Florida, I think it's likely that she will run for that seat on her own. We'll see a full term, but she could surprise us all and not do it. But I'll be, it would surprise me if she did not.
I'm always interested to hear your insights, so thank you for that. Do you want to ask?
One last?
Please.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, you know, one other interesting facet of this is it means that Governor DeSantis is going to be able to appoint two out of the three cabinet members for Florida, right? Because most people know, or some people don't, in Florida, we not only elect a governor and lieutenant governor together on the ticket, but we also elect three other statewide elected officials that make up the Florida Cabinet. And that's the Chief Financial Officer, the Attorney General, and the Agriculture Commissioner. Well, the Agriculture Commissioner is still going to be there, but the CFO, Jimmy Patronas, he's resigning because he's running for Congress. And now Ashley Moody, our Attorney General, has been appointed to the U.S. Senate. And under the Florida Constitution, the governor gets to name the interim replacements for cabinet officials. So Governor DeSantis is going to get to name his own replacement for Attorney General of Florida and his own replacement for CFO. So it's going to really enhance Governor DeSantis's power here in Florida.
No, thank you for pointing that out. I'm not sure everyone realizes that. I appreciate that. Speaking of the governor, let me ask you about the special session that he ordered. First, why call it now? The regular session starts beginning in March.
I think for two reasons, some of it for policy and some of it for politics. You know, the policy reason is that with this new incoming administration, Donald Trump being sworn in and promising day one, he's going to do dozens of different things, including a lot of executive orders about illegal immigration, you could argue that it's a big issue, that a lot of voters cast their ballot for Donald Trump because of immigration and illegal immigration, and that waiting another six weeks or whatever for the session to start would not be appropriate, that this is an emergency. At least, some people have looked at illegal immigration as an emergency. And so as a policy, as soon as President Trump issues some executive orders, then the legislature here in Florida could be ready to pass some bills that make it clear that Florida is going to work with DeSantis and Trump to crack down on illegal immigration. So, you know, I sort of, I think there's a legitimate policy reason, or at least a little. But I think a lot of it more is the politics in that calling a special session lets Governor DeSantis once again look like he's doing more to help Trump, not just the legislature. Keeps DeSantis in the news again. DeSantis is a lame duck governor. He's only got two years to go. He wasn't chosen as Vice President, and apparently, he's not going to be chosen as Secretary of Defense. And so he's got to figure out a way to stay relevant in the Trump universe if he wants to run for the Republican nomination for President again in four years. And so one of the ways to do that, he's been very clever politically for the last few years of doing things, taking actions to put him at the center and to attract media attention. And so calling a special session, making it seem like an emergency, making it seem like the legislature is going to bow to his will once again, that's all different ways that he can be in the spotlight and maybe, in particular in this case, since Donald Trump has already commended him for doing this, right? It keeps him in the good graces of Trump and Trump world, so that if he runs for President in four years of a Republican nomination, he at least has a chance.
What have you seen the response be from Republican and Democrat lawmakers to this session?
Yeah, well, it's been very interesting because the Republican leadership of the House and Senate reacted pretty strongly against this idea. They didn't like that DeSantis seemed to be taking unilateral action. Apparently, he had talked to them a little behind the scenes, and they had said, no, we don't think it's necessary. As they wrote specifically, we think it's premature and irresponsible. I mean, that's pretty harsh language. And it particularly is contrast to what we've seen from the legislature in the last four or five years, who basically rolled over and gave the governor everything he wanted when he wanted it. And that seems to maybe be changing. And I will add that, even though the legislature and the governor are of the same party, historically, even when the governor and the legislature were the same party, the legislature did operate as an independent branch, at least to some degree, that they took seriously their obligation to be a check and a balance and to actually be the legislature, not be the same as the executive. And so now, this is the first sign we've had, basically since DeSantis's first year, it's the first sign that we've had that the legislature is going to stand up a little bit. And I don't want to overemphasize that because it doesn't mean that the Republican conservative legislature is going to go against DeSantis and Trump when it comes to illegal immigration. In fact, when they put their response out to DeSantis, they made clear that they supported President Trump and his agenda to crack down on illegal immigration. So again, it's not a question of their, like, disagreeing with the policy, but I think they're trying to stand up to the governor to some degree and say, look, we're the legislature, we're the legislative leaders. We get to decide when we're going to do things, how we're going to do things, what's going to be on the agenda, and you have to work with us as an equal partner, not just assume that you can command us to do your bidding and we'll just do it. So it is unusual for the last four or five years, but it's not unusual for Florida politics, you know, going back 20 years, nor in most other states, I might add, right? Even again, in states where one party controls the governor and the legislature, there are usually some healthy disagreements between the legislature and the governor. And we just really haven't seen very much of that in the last few years.
The governor can order them into special session, though, correct?
He can, yeah. And I, yeah, to be clear, the governor does have that authority, but the legislative leaders did point out that they're not obligated to take up anything that they don't want to take up. So, yeah, the governor has the authority to call them in, but theoretically, I don't think this will happen. But theoretically, they could just come in, gavel into session, and then adjourn right then, or, you know, later that afternoon or whatever, right? I mean, they could come up and do nothing. I suspect, especially now that President Trump has endorsed DeSantis's idea of the special session, that the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House will sort of say, okay, well, we need to back down a little bit here probably and try to work together, but at the same time, still make it clear that the legislature is an independent branch, and we are not going to just do everything that the governor suggests. So it's a fine line, yeah. I mean, they don't want to, they clearly do support President Trump's and his agenda on illegal immigration. So again, I think that when they meet, they'll probably end up doing something, but technically speaking, they don't have to.
What do you think that this session that both parties have spoken out against, what do you think is realistic for the agenda items to be?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I have no idea because, you know, the governor laid out three, four, or five different items that he thought should be addressed, like condo safety, more aid to hurricane victims, of course, illegal immigration. But, you know, the legislative leaders said, yeah, we were going to, we are going to address all these things. We were going to address all these things, but there's no need to do them now. We can do them in March, right? I mean, it's going to be January 20th till Trump is sworn in, and then it's going to take several weeks for new policies to be formulated. And in the meantime, before the session actually starts, there's already committee meetings going on, which is usually the backbone of the legislative process. So, you know, if I had to guess, I would say that they probably will pass because of pressure for President Trump, and that's not necessarily from DeSantis, but they probably will pass at least some items dealing with illegal immigration. I don't know exactly what. DeSantis came out very, you know, not when he originally made the call, but earlier today or the other day, he made three or four more specific suggestions of the kinds of things that they might do on illegal immigration. So again, bottom line is, I would expect that the legislature, because of pressure from Trump, will take some action on illegal immigration, but maybe not on the other issues just yet. They might say, look, we don't need to do these just yet. We have a regular session coming. They already suggested, for instance, on the hurricane relief, that there's enough money in the budget to provide extra money right now. We don't need to pass a new law to do that. The money is already there and available. And with the condo issue, particularly down in South Florida, they had already resisted a call for a special session on this earlier, and they basically said, again, we will try to address this in the legislative session, but we need to strike a balance between safety after the collapse, you know, in Surfside, and finances, right? That we do realize that for some condominiums, this is becoming almost unsustainable financially if they have to come up with tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars for each unit owner to make sure that the condo has enough money to do needed repairs or ongoing repairs.
Aubrey Jewitt is a political science professor at UCF. There's more ahead here on Engage. There is new hope for solving cold cases and giving grieving families closure in central Florida. Volusia County's chief medical examiner teaches us about the innovative techniques helping his office resolve unsolved cases and identify the remains of the unknown. All of our shows are available on demand at cfpublic.org. This is Engage on Central Florida Public Media. You're listening to Engage on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. Ahead on this program, as the national ban on TikTok looms, we'll hear from a social media content producer in Orlando about how the Chinese video app helped her brother market his business.
He like posted a TikTok video and was like, I would love to include my online community and like my TikTok followers in this. So if you want to send a mug from where you're from, we'd love to have it in the diner. And he had probably gotten maybe about 400 or 500 mugs in like a week.
We'll learn how the end of the popular app may impact central Floridians. First, though, when someone dies, we're often left with questions. Why did this happen? How did this happen? In criminal cases, when a life is taken, the question becomes, who is responsible? On the TV show, you get the answer at the end of the hour. The crime happens, investigators ask some questions, the medical examiner fills in the blanks, and the bad guy is arrested in the last few minutes of the episode. Here in reality, it's not so formulaic. Some mysteries remain, years pass, and a case goes cold. When it comes to providing answers to those families desperate for closure, the Volusia County Medical Examiner's Office provides a death investigation service in cases referred to them. The office was recently awarded a grant from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for advanced genetic genealogy. This will fund techniques that could make a difference and finally resolve cold cases by identifying the victims in unresolved death investigations. To talk about the impact of this grant and the technology, we were joined by two members of the Volusia County Medical Examiner's Office. Madison Worley is a forensic investigator. We begin with chief medical examiner, Dr. James Foulcher. I noted that many people are familiar with how police approach cold cases from movies and TV. So I asked Dr. Foulcher, define a cold case from the perspective of a medical examiner.
A cold case for the medical examiner is really one of the persistently unidentified remains that we have. By law, we must store these decedents or their bones until we identify them. We cannot have them disposed of because we don't have an extant pen. So we're obligated to keep them. So these are persistently unidentified decedents or individuals that despite all efforts to identify them have yet to be identified.
How far back do the oldest cold cases go that you're dealing with?
Our oldest case right now is 1972. We have a large conglomeration of cases in the 80s and 90s, and then we have some in the 2000s. As DNA technology got better over the course of forensic science, we got better at identifying these decedents. Unfortunately, those really old cases have had decades for the DNA to deteriorate. Therefore, getting a profile and using traditional DNA methods of identification are usually not fruitful. That's why these cases require advanced next-generation genetic analysis.
How many cases do you have that are considered cold cases?
So we started, when I took over, at 33. We're now down to 21, counting some pending cases. And of those 21 cases, at least half have advanced testing pending or are being worked on actively.
How does it feel for you when you're able to, like, solve the cold case? And it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong here, from your perspective, solving a cold case would be being able to identify who this person was?
Yes, it's very gratifying. We give the decedent a name. We give that family closure. We potentially bring justice to the case if something malicious happened to the individual and there's still a perpetrator to charge. And it's really a mark of distinction for this office that we received this grant money and were able to continue using the advances in forensic science to identify these decedents. The identification of the persistently unidentified remains a mission of our office, but really any medical examiner's office. We do not want to have persistently unidentified individuals.
Madison, if I could bring you into the conversation now as well, I want to talk more about what this grant is going to do, but I also want to talk about something Dr. Foulcher just mentioned, just the families, your responsibility to the families, both of the identified and unidentified victims. Do you, what are your interactions with them?
You know, it varies. Sometimes they're grateful. A lot of times, they're dealing with the grief of an answer to a question they've been asking for decades. And I think any family who has a missing person, because that's really where these cases all start, right? These people are missing until they're identified by our office. It's, they, these families hold out hope that their loved one is going to just walk through the door one day or just going to pop up somewhere one day. And they're just, yeah, we were, you know, down in Tahiti having some fun, and unfortunately, when we identify them, that's not the answer that they're getting. So it's amazing to have the opportunity to speak with them, to give them the answers that they've been asking and provide the reasoning as to why, even if it's not always the answers they want, unfortunately.
Do they often come to you for updates, just looking for some clue?
Yeah, we get calls all the time about people who are looking for missing people. We have a spreadsheet that we keep track of all of them to make sure that we're doing the justice to current missing cases also. And then, once we are able to identify them, law enforcement makes contact with the families and notifies them. And then I try to provide all of the answers as to why their loved one passed away and what we've been able to uncover through all of the additional testing that we've done to provide those answers as to what happened.
Can you think of a case, are there cases that have stuck with you in particular that you can tell us about and why?
So there are several cases that have stuck with me. I think every case that we resolve sticks with me because all of these cases are very important to me. I think of these cases as all having a bit of an obstacle course that you have to work through because every case presents different challenges. Every case is unique in how we have to go about extracting DNA, you know, which part of their remains is more fruitful. And in that extraction attempts and stuff like that, unfortunately, most of the cases that we have recently resolved are still open and active, so I can't speak to their names and things like that. But every case that I've worked on and been able to provide families the closure to, they all stick with me persistently.
Can you speak more to just that closure? I'm thinking about it as a concept, but what does it actually do for these families who are, like, these are cold cases. For years of their lives, they're just wondering what happened. What does that closure actually allow them to do?
You know, I feel like that's different in every scenario. I think, but ultimately, it provides them with a definitive answer. It's not always the answer they want. Sometimes they're expecting it, sometimes they're not expecting that answer. Sometimes, you know, family members genuinely believe that their loved one just up and moved to a different part of the country, and they're happy and thriving. And so closure, I think, really is just providing the answer of, this is where this person is, this is how long they've been here, and this is what happened. And it's difficult to say what that emotional impact is for each family. I've seen them come in all different arrays of feeling and grief status, so it's very individualized to each case.
I think it's hard for families to start the grief process when there's that big unknown. How do you grieve someone that might be alive and well and, quite frankly, just has kind of ties with you? That's a very different grief than my loved one was, you know, unfortunately, met an untimely end, maybe murdered in Volusia County in 1972. It's a big difference. So I think having the answer allows the people to deal with it, the families, to deal with it on their own terms, whatever those terms may be.
Dr. Foulcher, are you able to determine what actually happened in addition to who a person is when we're dealing with cold cases like this that have been unsolved for years upon years?
Well, in some of the cases, yes. In some of the cases, these cases, so first off, these cases have all had autopsies. These cases have all had anthropology. These cases have all had forensic odontology. So we know a fair bit about the decedent, actually. And oftentimes, we do have a cause of death. I can't speak to particulars, but we do have children in this cohort, and we also have homicide victims. So in those cases, we know what happened. And in those cases, there may be prosecution if the person that did it is identifiable and still alive. I know we've had cases where the person unfortunately has passed, but I still think there's value in that justice may not be able to be served in a traditional sense, but at least law enforcement and forensic science finally got to the level where they could help that family. And we could at least put a name on the victim and a name on the probable person that killed them.
So the Volusia County Medical Examiner's Office has been awarded this grant for genetic genealogy in these cold cases. Help me understand more about the technology this grant is going to facilitate, the differences it could make for you.
So, as I said before, part of the funding for the grant, the criteria, is that we have to have exhausted all other possibilities. So this represents next-generation genetic analysis. We're looking at individual, single nucleotide polymorphisms. And the technology, depending on the lab, it's usually some massive parallel analysis where they're running very large amounts of DNA for processing to get potential single-nucleotide polymorphisms, individual nucleotides that are mutated and sustained in a family lineage. This extraction technology allows us to get very high-quality DNA profiles that are very reproducible out of DNA that previously was unusable, that was basically so degraded you could not use it at all. There was no value in it. It's the same specimen, it's just better technology. And what these labs will do with that is they'll use that profile to find a common ancestor to someone that has put in their DNA to a DNA repository, generally a living person. And we could be talking 10, eight generations back. So we find this common ancestor, and then these labs have genealogists, and they create a family tree that traces our decedent back to that common ancestor and then forward again to a living individual that has a name, some cousin, uncle, who knows, living in another state. And then we, or law enforcement, contact that individual and ask, actually, a pretty painful question, did you have a loved one go missing in 1972 in Volusia County? And more often than not, the answer is yes. And we know the name. Then we get a specimen from that individual and compare it with the decedent, and that provides your identification. It's a very complicated process with lots of moving parts. And I will say, without this technology and without the genetic genealogy, we would not identify these people. Every other scientific avenue has been explored. Every dead end, or every avenue, has been met with a dead end in all these cases.
Madison, how are you feeling about the potential of what this grant will help you all do?
I'm incredibly grateful, and I'm honored to get to work. I'm incredibly grateful and I'm honored to get to work on these cases every day. And I'm always looking for different methods to acquire funding to finish identifying the other 23, 21 cases that we have remaining here, because everybody deserves to have their name back. It's a fundamental human right. And to me, this grant, it means that we're able to provide somebody their identity back, we're able to give some sort of closure to additional families. And it really speaks to all of the effort that goes in across the board from multiple agencies, because this is really a giant partnership between not only all of the people here at the Medical Examiner's Office, but all of the different law enforcement agencies here in Volusia County, as well as the different organizations that do the genealogy testing. Authram has been the main organization we've worked with in regards to this grant. And, you know, they have been very communicative throughout the entire process, making sure that we were set to submit the, the application for our cases as soon as it opened, because funding was limited. So we needed to make sure that we were on top of it and ready to submit as many cases as we could to acquire this funding. And I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to get to pursue some additional identifications. And I'm very grateful for all of the help from the various different agencies that have helped us through this process.
Dr. James Foulcher is Chief Medical Examiner for Volusia County. Madison Worley is a forensic investigator at the Medical Examiner's Office. Coming up with that clock ticking on the TikTok ban in the US going into effect this weekend, Central Floridians who rely on the social media platform are reworking their digital strategies. A local content creator shares the potential impact on small businesses and gives us the update on what's being downloaded now. We want to talk about what you want to talk about. We want to hear from you. Let us know what you'd like to hear more about. Send us an email to engage@cfpublic.org. This is Engage on Central Florida Public Media. You are listening to Engage here on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. So I don't even want to think about the amount of time that I have spent watching ridiculous videos on social media. To be clear, that does not include cat videos. That is time well spent. Anyway, most of us are on some form of social media for entertainment or for work. Pew Research shows that 1/3 of adults in America use TikTok. Just based on the volume of users, there's the potential to reach millions of people on that platform where people share short videos. The Supreme Court appears unlikely to block a law that requires TikTok to either be divested from its China-based parent company or shut down in the United States this Sunday, January 19th. Samantha Longton is a longtime, full-time content creator and social media manager living in Orlando with well over 100,000 followers and millions of likes on TikTok. In addition to her personal brand, she also assists businesses with building theirs. Longton joined Engage earlier today, and I started our conversation by asking her how social media content creation became a career for her.
I've always created content ever since I was like a little kid. I think I got my first job so I could buy a camera so I could start doing it. I went to school for PR and, you know, up in New York in Oswego, and I had an internship with the athletics department, and there I worked on social media. So I did a lot of like content for our hockey teams. It was very athletic-driven. It was super fun, one of the best internships of my life. It was like super amazing. So I kind of got like hooked onto creating social media content. But at the time, I mean, I graduated in 2018 from college, social media wasn't really a career quite yet. So that wasn't really like a huge ambition of mine. I didn't think that it was something that was going to happen for me one day. So, you know, I did come down to Florida for the Disney College Program just to see where that would take me and had like the best time ever with some friends here and just kind of started a Florida life. So, you know, after my college program ended, I came back down here and I did work at a call center for a little bit. And then during the pandemic, I did end up getting furloughed for like a little bit of time. And during my time not working, I kind of dove back into my passion of creating and making videos again. And that kind of started on TikTok. I had TikTok for a while, but I didn't really create much on there until I was furloughed. So I started just kind of going around Florida and finding things to do that weren't the theme park related and small businesses to support and springs to go to and just basically anything you can do in the area. I mean, Orlando has so much to offer. So it was really exciting being able to dive into creating content and stuff that people didn't really talk about. So I kind of started building from there. My first video on Orlando things was Ginny Springs, and it did go viral. And I remember going crazy about it. My friends and I were like, oh my gosh, like, oh, this is insane. Like, and the funniest part about it is I didn't pronounce the spring name correct. I pronounced it Guinea instead of Ginny. Rookie mistake. But, you know, from there, I, I just kept going. And people were suggesting all these places to go to and to visit and to check out in Central Florida. So that just became my thing, was creating on things to do here. So I guess that's kind of like the long story short, but also a long story to where I am now for content, but that's kind of how it all kicked off.
So this, using TikTok, are you using it to create content for your platform? Or also are you working with small businesses to help them create content for them as well?
Yeah, it's, it's a mix. So right now, currently, I do create full-time across social media platforms for businesses and brands and then also for myself. So it depends on what the partnership is and it depends on whatever contract and whatever we go through is. There are some brands that I'll make their content and you'll have no idea that I've even touched it because I'm not in it, I'm not, you know, around, like you don't, no one would even know. And then there are some brands where I am definitely in the content and promoting. So it is, it's quite a mix.
I would love for you to explain for our audience who may be thinking, what's the big deal about TikTok? This is a video sharing platform. Can you help us understand what's different about TikTok than other things that exist?
Yeah, so with TikTok, it's such a great entertainment platform. And, you know, it's fun for the memes and it's fun for the dances and all that stuff too. But it is an incredible marketing tool. Brands and businesses, if they're able to dive into TikTok and be able to create and produce content the way that their consumers are consuming content, they can really meet them at like a level to where other platforms don't really reach. So if you're able to cater to that Gen Z audience as a brand, as a business, it can really kind of boost just kind of like your reputation and how you're able to be relatable. You know, the problem with brands and businesses nowadays is that some of them seem just like robots and some of them seem like so unrelatable. And if they're able to capitalize on TikTok, that can really change a brand or a business for the complete better in all ways and shapes and forms. So, yeah.
Samantha, I'm not asking you how much money you're making, but I would love to know, how would you be impacted if TikTok is banned this weekend?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely be impacted. I do make a great deal of my income from TikTok and collaborations from there. However, when I first started diving into social media as a full-time freelancer, I really tried to keep all of my options open and make sure that I wasn't hyper-focused on one specific social media platform or entertainment platform. So I pretty much spread out all of my content and all of my work. So it will take a pretty decent cut, but I'll still be okay.
I'm wondering what you think about those businesses that you're helping. And it seems like this is a marketing tool that they're not getting other places and TikTok's allowing them to reach a different audience. How do you think that they might be impacted by a potential ban?
Well, yeah, they'll definitely be impacted. Like I said before, it's, TikTok is just a way for them to show up to their target audience in a way that other social media platforms aren't able to, you know, assist with. So thinking about brands like Duolingo, right? How they are so great on TikTok, you know, they are so on top of the trends and they can relate to their, their Gen Z audience and their target audience. Or even when people were talking the other day about Red Note, Duolingo jumped on it immediately. And that's what they wanted, like that's what the people were looking for. That's what like the content people were, were scoping out. And it just kind of like makes people recognize those brands a little bit more and gives them a little bit more visibility than maybe brands that didn't, you know, hop on to the trends and to what was going on on social media when it came to Red Note.
Actually, for our audience who may be wondering, what is Red Note? What do you see Red Note as, as a content creator? Another platform?
Yeah, it definitely is another platform. I did download it so I could take a peek into research, for sure. A lot of it is in Mandarin. So I'm not super versed in Mandarin, but when it comes to the content on there, very similar to TikTok. I mean, it is, it is their own version of TikTok as well, but it's been really fun and like funny, just kind of like scrolling through like the For You page on there. And everyone is so welcoming over there and so like fun and people are like teaching Mandarin on like their accounts at this point now. And, and I've seen a lot of creators jumping over there to try to kind of kickstart and get ahead of the game on building a following and building their brand over on another platform. I don't know how long Red Note would last for. You know, there's so many apps out there. I mean, there's another one coming up called Neptune, I believe, too, that people are queuing in to get their usernames and stuff. That could be a TikTok replacement. You can never really predict what app is going to be next. I don't really think anyone thought TikTok was going to be next when it was Musically. I remember seeing people on Musically and being like, yeah, that's weird, I'm not doing that. Yeah, I'm not doing like the lip singing and I'm not doing like the dancing and stuff like that. Or like, oh, that's not really my thing. And yeah, TikTok is just known for that. So like, I probably wouldn't go over there and, and explore it or whatever. And then during the pandemic, you know, everyone went over and it just became what it is today. So you can never really predict what's next, but it's kind of funny doing some research and seeing what people are already trying to dive into.
Are you planning to continue to use it through potentially, I guess it could shut down on Sunday?
TikTok?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely still plan on using it. I've been posting, you know, like I normally would. And I still have that, I know a lot of people are doing like their goodbye videos and I still have queued up for me, which is like, I still haven't posted it because it still doesn't feel like completely real to me. I still don't, personally, I just don't want to believe that TikTok's going to go away. I don't, I still don't think that it will because we've been threatened with this ban a million times over. But it is starting to feel a little bit more real, a little bit more scary. So I have my little goodbye video on like my back burner, but it's, it still hasn't hit me to click post on that one because I just still don't know and I don't want to believe it.
Samantha, is there a resolution that you would like to see here? Perhaps a private buyer coming in?
Oh, yeah, 100%. I think that would be a great resolution for sure, a private buyer coming in and taking over, just so we can keep, you know, that platform going. It's a huge source of income for people. I know this isn't really like super broadcast for me, but my brother is actually also a TikToker. And he's very, he's pretty big, bigger than I am. And he actually took his platform and he opened his diner in New York. And like his business exists because of TikTok. And he, you know, goes live every day still. He's probably live right now. And, you know, films himself cooking and people watch and people like enjoy and fly in from all over the world to my brother's diner to go try his food. And, you know, it's, it's kind of crazy seeing how an app or like a social media or an entertainment platform can kind of make that happen and kind of build businesses just without even being on the app anymore. You know, my brother has like a physical diner where people come in and it's really cool. So a lot of, a lot of brands and businesses have been able to kind of capitalize and, and continue to grow. But it'd be cool to keep it still on TikTok, to still watch him cook every day. I like to hop in every so often.
Samantha, have you talked to your brother about his concerns with the ban?
Yeah, you know, he's still, he's feeling the same way as I am. You know, at the end of the day, he, TikTok is what launched him as well. And he wouldn't have his business the way that he does right now if it weren't for TikTok. I mean, I think at one point, he, when he was first opening his restaurant or first announced that he was opening his restaurant, he like posted a TikTok video and was like, I would love to include my online community and like my TikTok followers in this. So if you want to send a mug from where you're from, we'd love to have it in the diner. And he had probably gotten maybe about 400 or 500 mugs in like a week. And like he's, it's crazy that he was able to just include his online community, but it would be kind of upsetting to see that go away. A lot of people still feel a connection to him and still watch his stuff every single day and, you know, check in with him and feel a connection with him. So that being severed is definitely not favorable. And I don't think that he would continue on another platform. I think he would just focus on the diner at that point. But, you know, it's kind of interesting to see where that leads.
I'm just curious if this has you thinking about your future as a content creator or if that's something that you're hearing from other content creators, just the uncertainty about this moving forward as a career for them?
Yeah, I mean, for myself, kind of like what I said before is I, I love TikTok and creating on this platform. It's been incredible and I was able to build a freelance career off of this. And I also was able to land, you know, a really big career with, you know, working for a very big corporate job here in Orlando and managing and strategizing for a TikTok page with them. And, you know, those things wouldn't have happened without TikTok. But with TikTok, I was really able to build a portfolio and build an experience that I can take with me to wherever I go next, if there is another place that we go next. And, you know, have kind of like a little bit of a work experience that maybe I wouldn't have had before without TikTok. So I would be bummed for sure if it were to go away, but I think the experience that I had gotten off of it is rewarding enough to where I feel really satisfied with where the app has taken me and the journey that I've come so far with it.
Orlando-based Samantha Longton is a full-time content creator and social media manager. That is all for today's edition of Engage. We will be back on Tuesday at 3 o'clock. All of our shows are available on demand at cfpublic.org so you can listen anytime at your convenience. I'm Sharon Stone. Thank you for the company. All Things Considered is coming up, following NPR News.